Okay, it's 7:01. I'll call the With County Board of Supervisors meeting back to order is April the 10th, 2018. We've been in budget discussion since 5:00 PM. So we're into our regular session now. We have Pastor Andrew Davis from Fellowship Baptist Church here to do our invocation. Would everyone please stand and remain standing for our pledge?
Let's pray.
Our Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to come together. Lord, may we never take for granted the type of government that we enjoy and that it comes from your good hand. I pray, Lord, that you be with all those in leadership here tonight, Lord, that you give them wisdom, and, Father, that they would govern in a way that most pleases you. We're just grateful to be here, Lord, and we thank you most of all for the Lord Jesus Christ. For it's in his name we ask these things. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome everyone this afternoon, evening. Next item on our agenda is citizens' time, and I don't have the clipboard. Did anyone sign up for citizens' time?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Have nobody sign up, but I will give anybody the opportunity. If they would like to get up and speak during citizens' time, they can come on up. Here are none, we'll close citizens' time. Next item on our agenda is a presentation of a retirement resolution, and I'm going to read the resolution. With County Resolution 18-2018-08 honoring Hayden H. Horni, With County Clerk of the Circuit Court. Whereas Hayden H. Horni was elected to the position of the With County Clerk of the Circuit Court in November 1983 and began his duties as clerk on January 1st, 1984. And whereas Hayden retired on March 31st, 2018 after 34 years of dedicated service as a clerk of the With County Circuit Court. And whereas during his tenure, Hayden oversaw the successful implementation of a financial and case management system with the Supreme Court of Virginia, modernizing the filing system and obtaining grants to the Library of Virginia for the preservation and security of the court's old records. And whereas Hayden served as president of the Virginia Clerk's Association from 1997 to 1998, at which time the annual clerk conference was held here in Wiffle. And whereas, while serving as the Clerk Association, in the Clerk's Association Hayden served on the education, staffing, compensation, executive and legislative committees, and was instrumental in compiling procedural manuals, specifically the probate manual and miscellaneous procedure manual, which is used throughout the state. And whereas Hayden represented the state of Virginia as the Director in the International Association of Clerk Recorder's, Elected Officials, and Treasurers. And whereas Hayden worked with state legislation on laws affecting the clerk's office and was instrumental in writing the Technology Trust Fund bill. Therefore, be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors assembled in regular session this 10th day of April, 2018, does hereby express its heartfelt appreciation to Hayden H. Horni for his time and service as the With County Clerk of the Circuit Court, and does hereby wish him and his family well in the future. And be it further resolved that the resolution be entered into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors. I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I make that motion.
To have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mister Hayden Horni, would you please come up, sir? I get you step up here on the...
I'll be. Thank you.
Hayden, it's been a pleasure, and on behalf of the board and the citizens of With County, we want to thank you for all your service you've done for With County. And for my personally, it's been a pleasure knowing you and working with you some down in the clerk's office. And here's your resolution. We also have some other things for you. As appreciation, a watch, and your plaque.
Well, thank you. You all shouldn't have done all that. Thank you, appreciate the board, where y'all work with me. It's been an honor to serve as clerk of the people, and like I said, appreciate all your support and the boards before you.
Oh, we appreciate all you've done.
Appreciate y'all continuing to support my staff and all, because you're the ones that kept me where I'm at. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Hayden.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more presentation. It's for the resolution. Ms. Lawson will present.
Okay. This one's for Sebastian Lamro. Do you want to go ahead and step up, Sebastian? First of all, I want to say it's an honor for me to be able to present this to you of what you wrestled since you were little. He's also a great cross-country runner. I'm just really proud of you. So with that said, With County Resolution 2018-05, a resolution honoring Sebastian Lamro, a George With High School wrestling team. Whereas sophomore Sebastian Lamro completed 2017-2018 wrestling season with an overall record of 31-1. Whereas Sebastian advanced to 2017-2018 Virginia High School League Group 1A State Wrestling Championship. And whereas Sebastian defeated the competition capturing the 2017-2018 state champion title with the 113-pound weight class earning his second consecutive state title. Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends Sebastian Lamro for his outstanding dedication, athletic ability, and sportsmanship. Now, therefore, be resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors present this resolution to Sebastian Lamro in recognition for his 2017-2018 113-pound class individual state title. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors. This was adopted on the 27th day of March, 2018. Congratulations.
I entertain a motion to adopt...
I'll tell you about it.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
Congratulations.
That's one thing we can be proud of our county. It's come a long ways as our wrestling team and Royal Treet and with George With. It's a great accomplishment. Okay, moving on then to our agenda. We have payment of invoices. Entertain a motion to approve.
I move.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the invoices. Any discussion, any invoice, any board member would like to pull out or discuss. Here are none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mister Horni?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item is the minutes of our previous meeting of March 27th, 28th, and 29th of 2018. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'm going to get a motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Does any corrections or changes need to be made? Here are none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mister Vault?
Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't here.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Moving right along to old business, the A-R-E-C-A appointment.
Mister Chairman, put this on the agenda for old business, but at the meeting, I understand the Apex Authority talked about some several members that they were interested in talking to. So if you all are wanting to let them talk to some of those members and have a recommendation, that would be fine, and we'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay. Mister Byers, anything else on our old business?
No, Mister Chairman, I do not have anything else.
Okay, going to new business. I don't see our delegate Jeff Campbell is present at this time. If he comes in, we'll move back to him. Fort Chiswell RV Park. Mister Byers, you want to summarize?
Yes, Mister Chairman, what you have there, Mister Little, who's here with us at Fort Chiswell RV Park, has made a request for an expansion of the RV park that is down there. As you all are aware, it's a very successful park and has a lot of attendees that go there. He's wanting to expand it. Under our manufactured home ordinance, he went through the planning commission, has received a recommendation of a special use permit for the expansion, and staff recommends that you all approve the granting of a special use permit for the expansion of the Fort Chisel RV Park.
I entertain a motion.
I move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Here are none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mister Horni?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Motion passes. Economic, literary loan approval letter.
Yes, Mister Chairman, just for informational purposes, I've put in the package, we did receive, the school board did receive, I have a copy of it, that we were approved for the literary loan for what was the Royal Treet High School and Middle School project, and the interest rate on that loan is at 2%. The bond council has prepared a resolution that the school board will be adopting probably at their meeting Thursday, and then after that, we will be taking the necessary action we need in order to close on that loan and do the refinancing of that Royal Treet High School, Royal Treet Middle School project. No action needed at this time, but this is good news, and will provide quite a bit of debt service savings for us.
Okay. Economic Development Committee report. Mister Lester?
The Economic Development Committee met on April 10th, 2018, and recommends proceeding with the renewal agreement with Retail Coach.
Okay, come from committee, it doesn't need a second?
Mister Chairman, if I might...
Oh, that's right.
There was a general consensus, yes, sir. If you will have a second on that from committee, I would appreciate it.
Okay, we have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Now, any question or discussion? Here are none?
I want to check. I know you all think are familiar with this, the Retail Coach. This is the group that's been trying to do the marketing Royal Treet with Phil and With County, and this is for renewing it for a second year.
Okay, no further questions. Do a roll call vote. Mister Vault?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item, do we have anything else from the Economic Development Committee? Okay, the Apex Construction Committee.
We met April 10th, three recommendations, so put into the contract after negotiation, handicap parking area approaches and paving. We'll do them separately or all together.
We'll do each one of them separate. Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
Discussion. These items were cut out of the project when the previous board allocated the extra money out of the general fund. Is this, does this represent a savings over what was, I guess, listed then on the contract?
It is. Each one of them is less than what was on the original contract.
Do we know how much, how much less we've saved or will save?
The...
Stephen, our copy doesn't have that savings.
Yeah, I'm looking real quick here to see if I can pull that up. On the road, I can't give you the exact figure, Mister Vault, because the road also has a future section to be completed as well, and what is there is less than what was anticipated for the parking lot area. I'm looking to see if I have it. If not, I will go grab it out of my office, the items that were removed from the contract.
And as a discussion, Mister Vault, this timeline gave us time to improve a bit on the original design. There were questions that you just couldn't get answered in the timeframe, and it was deducted. It's put back, and a better product.
The, my, Mister Chairman, the fire alarm was originally proposed at $48,000. This is $46,700. The sprinkler system was $139,000. This is $137,650. So $1,300 or so dollars on both of them.
Okay, any more questions? On the first item, we'll take one of these each at one time. Here are none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mister Horni?
Aye.
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 No.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes six with one. Next item.
Fire alarm system, that's the system that triggers the fire and the fire suppression, recommend $46,700.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any more discussion? Here are none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mister Vault?
No.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Motion passes six, one. Next item.
Third item, the fire sprinkler system, that is a sprinkler that actually puts water in. It's $137,650. And I think that one is a safe, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's...
Yes.
Come in at first at $139,000. Again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second? Any more discussion?
Discussion, please.
Yes.
You know, I hate to keep foreign money into this, but can we open without this?
Code requirement.
No, we've put so much into it already, which I wasn't a part of, but at this point, we've got to open. We've got to be successful. I don't see a choice.
Any more questions or discussion? Here are none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mister Horni?
Aye.
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 No.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes six, one. Any more from the Construction Committee?
I expect Mister Vaughn might want to have a minute to give us a progress report.
Mister Vaughn, you want to give a progress report?
Yep.
Step on up there if you would.
Percentage is a few plus 45 with the payout today. So dollar-wise, we're, the majority of the large materials are in. The structure, the sheeting has started. The west lean-to has, the floor deck was poured, and they're actually putting the stud walls up. Some of the heaters and air conditioning units are being hung. The lights are being hung, so that's going really well. Second versus the first, the exact same process starts tomorrow morning at 5:00 AM on the east side, where the floor deck is going to be poured, and that's an all-day evolution. They'll probably start finishing the floor about 11:00 PM tomorrow night, so it's an all-day evolution. They can then go onto that side after it cures for a few days and start putting floors and walls and start doing all the interior work on that. The end of the building, Stephen, you might show that picture, all except for the end of the lean-to, we're passing around on the west end, is done. So that's going to be a nice windbreak for the workers in there as they continue to work on the inside. Of course, now it's warmed up a little bit, but it's always windy up there. So the progress is on schedule, and we're moving right ahead with it. And if you want to come out tomorrow morning at sunrise and see how they place a floor deck, come on by.
Anybody have any questions for Mister Vaughn? I think made a lot of progress the last couple of days on the west side. Thank you, Mister Vaughn. Next item is Commonwealth Transportation Board meeting on May 14th, 2018. Mister Byers, you want to summarize what the meeting is about?
Yeah, basically, they have their public meetings every year. This is on the six-year improvement program. I always think it's always important to try to attend as many of these things as we can, keep good relations up with the BDOT and the Transportation Board. If anybody wants to ride down with me, I'll probably look at leaving here about 2:45 or so that day, so I can get down there early and talk to them before the meeting starts. So if anybody wants to go, just let me know, and we'll go down there at that time.
I will be going, and Mister Hale will be going. I don't know if anybody else will be or not.
Fortunately, it's closer this time. It's just to the higher ed center. We don't have to go any further.
Okay, next item is our surplus auction. Go deal surplus auction. Have a list of items in front of you, and the high bid, and the bidder. Intervene a motion to accept these bids. Lord, do we have to climb surplus first?
I would declare surplus and accept the bids, Mister Chairman.
The climb surplus and accept the bids.
So I make a motion to accept?
Climb surplus and accept the bids. Okay.
I'll say that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Here are none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mister Vault?
Aye.
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 Okay. Mister Byer?
I may have Delegate Campbell here.
Yes, and Senator Chafin, I think.
Come in. You're on perfect timing.
Oh, really?
Welcome, Delegate Campbell, Senator Chafin. It's nice to see y'all. And I'll ask Delegate Campbell to come right on up and introduce the rest of your entourage.
Well, it's good to see you all.
Good to see you.
I wish I could tell you I was bringing a budget, but we won't know until a few days. I know that's tough on you guys. But we're pleased to be here tonight with you, and we want to present an opportunity to you. And I don't know how much education you all have gotten on what's going on with the opioid crisis in this country right now. But I will guarantee you, in investigating your budget, you're discovering that it's having a major impact on your finances here in terms of increased foster care numbers, treatment programs that you're having to fund, law enforcement costs, incarceration costs. I'm sure your jail per diem rate is much higher this year than it was last. It's going to continue to climb. In addition to that, you know, there's residual impacts in terms of how it affects your workforce. If you have people who have gotten addicted to these types of drugs, they have difficulty passing drug tests, so it's hard to recruit industry. It's hard to expand industry because you can't outfit them with the workforce. And so ultimately, this is an issue that the General Assembly has been looking at for a couple of years now. Senator Chafin and I have been working on it very hard. We passed a package of opioid bills last year that controls how those drugs are prescribed and delivered in Virginia. But, you know, the issue is, is that we've got, we've got to have resources to address this problem. And the question is, what is the problem? Well, what we've discovered is, is that there were manufacturers and distributors of these drugs that were marketing these drugs in such a negligent fashion that we believe it's certainly legally actionable. And there's been about 450 now counties and cities and towns across the country that have filed this type of litigation that we're urging that you enter into here tonight. And mostly, these cases are being filed in federal court. And they, and there's one jurisdiction in Cleveland, Ohio, the Northern District of Ohio, that has been designated as the MDL for multi-district litigation. And a judge has been appointed to oversee the discovery process there and resolution process. If that resolution can be had by settlement, if it can't, then what's going to happen is ultimately is that those cases that are filed by individual counties will be remanded back to the jurisdictions from where they came, Western District, Virginia, obviously, in this case. So Senator Chafin, myself, and Kim Hall, who has a personal injury firm in Avon, put together a consortium and reached out and began to partner with this firm, Wagstaff and Cartmail out of Kansas City. And they specialize in this type of mass tort litigation, particularly healthcare litigation. I think you all got packets of materials that we had forwarded to you. Did you not?
I had sent it. It was late this afternoon.
Okay.
They sent me last week the long one.
Okay.
Case, so they just got that this afternoon, so they may know a little bit.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Well, in that packet, you'll see some of the types of litigation that they've undertaken and some of the defendants. You'll, some you'll recognize, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Cardinal Health, Purdue Pharma. Some you may not recognize, quite frankly. But anyway, we've been meeting with several counties and cities around the area. We met with Galax and Carroll last night. I was in Floyd this morning. We just met with Smith. We've got about a dozen other localities that we're also meeting with. And the idea is that we want to form a joint coalition of counties. We want one collective voice because we believe that that will resonate much more strongly in the litigation, obviously, than if we piecemealed it. In addition to that, it will ultimately have less of a financial impact on the county, if, the individual county, if in fact the case is ultimately resolved, because you can spread the cost of that litigation across, you know, a dozen or more counties, obviously, then that's going to be cheaper than one county having to bear its individual costs. And they could be significant, I will tell you that. The proposal that we have presented to you doesn't require the county to actually lay out any money at all. It takes no risk, basically. We're doing this on a contingency basis. Ultimately, we're fronting the cost, and the cost could be substantial. We estimate with these types of experts and these types of defendants that we could have millions of dollars in litigation costs that we're fronting. But we think it's, this is well calculated to address this problem, to help the county recoup some of its resources. And I will introduce to you Eric Barton now, who is here. He's a partner with Wagstaff and Cartmail. And after he presents to you, then we'll be here available to take any questions you may.
Thank you, Delegate Campbell. Welcome.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Eric Barton. I am from Wagstaff and Cartmail in Kansas City. First, before I say anything, let me invite any of you to ask any question that you may have. I think that's probably the most value I can provide, is if any of you have questions about what this litigation is, what our counties suing for, and how does it work, and that, please feel free. I'll try to give you a quick overview, but I just may not, I may not be answering the question that might be in your mind, so feel free to ask. Very quickly, the, as Mister Campbell said, the, there is a litigation that is moving, and it's starting to move quickly down the tracks. And it's by cities and counties primarily, states too, but really, the drivers of this currently across the country are counties and some cities. And I think there's a good reason for that. The effects of the opioid epidemic, which is really dramatic, a major, major public health crisis, and I, you know, think that you all and in the positions that you're in see that. see that and kind of see how it plays out, as well as anybody from a, you know, a community standpoint, because you see all the places where it does have impact and real fiscal impact. But cities and counties are feeling the effects of it in their budgets, and so I think that's why they're driving it as much as anything. Our firm is involved in it. We have been involved in opioid abuse litigation against drug companies that are abusing the laws. They are, they have been fraudulent, they have been, you know, very deceptive in the marketing of opioid pain medicines. And while there's a lot of factors, it's complicated. When there becomes a big public health crisis like this, there's a lot of places where you can look and say, you know, this has been contributing to it, and that has too. It begins and began with the drug companies. Purdue Pharma really got it going back in the mid to late 90s, when they took their drug, Oxycontin, and turned it from a limited use, limited indication pain medicine, only for real, true, severe, short-term breakthrough pain. Doctors had for decades and decades treated opioid pain medicines very, very carefully with their patients. That was for good reason, that they are highly addictive. But Purdue started to put out a new message, and they said, this drug's a little bit different, and you can give it to patients. It's safe, it's not addictive, it's a slower release, it's okay. There was never any science to support that. Unfortunately, the medical community, over time, with the very sophisticated marketing that the drug companies do, that they're very, very good at, they kind of got the medical community on board with more and more doctors kind of accepting that these drugs could be prescribed to people for long periods of time. That was the seeds of it. And then, over time, the, both manufacturers and the distributors have fueled the epidemic to their benefit, enriching themselves by ignoring federal laws that are directly supposed to prevent things like this. That's the sad thing, is that the Controlled Substances Act has been on the books for a long time, and it has told the drug manufacturers and distributors that if there are unusually high amounts of these controlled substances going to a particular location, that they have to report that, got to report that to the DEA. That obligation's been there, it's been clear, and it's been completely ignored by the, both the manufacturers and the distributors. And so that's why we're suing. That's why we're suing them. And as I say, so as Mr. Campbell said, there's a number of counties that are doing this. It has reached a point now where the federal courts have consolidated that litigation into one court before one judge, and it is now starting to move into discovery. And in fact, there are even settlement negotiating teams that have been created to start talking about resolution of these things. Does that mean it's going to end in the next few months? No, I mean, I would, I wish that were true, but it's not. It's going to be a long, hard fight against very sophisticated drug companies. But, and it's not, and it is not only about money. It is about money for counties and cities to recoup some of the costs that you bear. That is important, but it's also about one more way, not the only way, but one more way to try to change behavior among the drug industry and to try to just get the epidemic under control and bring us back to a healthier place. So we invite you, we invite you to consider joining the fight with us and with other area counties, we hope, and creating, you know, a good group of counties in southwest Virginia that, you know, kind of join together and pursue this to try to get a good outcome. Our law firm, very quickly, we are in Kansas City, Missouri. We are, we have 25 lawyers, and most of us are involved in healthcare-related litigation. A lot of it, and increasingly, has been like this, not, you know, this is unique, the opioid epidemic, but we do sue drug companies a lot. That's kind of what, that's one of our areas, for better or worse. That's the fights that we've chosen to take. But we also represent hospitals and doctors. We have, that's frankly how our firm began, was representing hospitals and doctors. So we got into the healthcare field, and then, over time, have just found there to be times when we have needed to take on the drug industry for abuses, and that's what we're doing here as well. So we're one of a handful of firms in the country that are leading and deeply involved in this opioid litigation. We got involved in it a couple of years ago, when a whistleblower from one of the drug companies that's now under federal indictment came to us and said, this is terrible, what our company's doing. And so we filed a, what's called False Claims Act, with that whistleblower against that drug company, and the federal government got involved with us. And so we've actually been, you know, on the front lines of the opioid litigation for a couple of years now. And we're now turning our attention to cities and counties and looking for ways to try to help you all recoup some of the expenses that you bear. That's probably what I have to say, but if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
So you want to have any questions, Mr. Hale?
Have your firm successfully done a class action, or is this a modified? Is there any civil rules that make this different than a class action?
It is. It isn't a class action. It sometimes feels like it, because there's a whole lot of similar plaintiffs doing the same kind of thing, but it is not a class action. It is an individual, it is a group of individual actions. What we call that in our legal world is a mass tort, and that's a little different than a class action, but sometimes they feel the same. But how they're different is, you know, class actions are, those are cases where you have a whole bunch of people who have been harmed in a very small way, and they don't have a, you know, it's not worth it for them to bring an individual action, so they have a class action to try to get relief. We believe each county here in southwest Virginia has been significantly impacted. You know, you're not, your damages aren't small. They're significant. They've been significant for several years, and they're going to continue into the future, because this epidemic, unfortunately, there's no magic wand to make it just go away. And so your damages are unique, they exist in your budgets, they exist in your law enforcement and your social services. And so it's your own case. It's not a class action, but it is a consolidation, if you will, a grouping of similar county actions. The reason for that is, it's for efficiency. If there's 450 and someday, within the next six months, there might be 1,500, 2,000, 5,000, I'm not sure where it stops, but if there's a whole bunch of cases that are against the same defendants alleging the same misconduct, the federal courts start to organize that and say, well, we're going to only, the CEO of Johnson &amp; Johnson only has to testify once, you know, and so everybody has to show up. So it's not a class action. Your case would be your own case, and, you know, if it did not resolve by a settlement, which is what we believe and hope we can get a good settlement, by that meaning, not just financially, but industry reform, you know, a real comprehensive resolution. If we don't get something like that, then theoretically, your case, not theoretically, actually, your case could eventually be tried, just like any other county's case could be tried, by itself, not a class action, but your own case. And so, I don't know if that answers your question, but this isn't a class action. It is a, it's a mass tort. So our firm has done these. We have sued Johnson &amp; Johnson. We have been a lead national firm in about a dozen mass torts against drug companies dating back 15 years. So they are expensive, they're kind of time-consuming, and we usually do join with other lawyers and other firms in doing it, because they are expensive and risky. So we do, we do form, and we're just extremely pleased and honored to have been asked by Mr. Campbell, Mr. Chafin, a couple of other, Kim Haw, some local lawyers with local ties who really know these communities and know this area, have been invited to join with them and kind of pursuing this here, so.
So this is a southwest Virginia consortium that will be a case?
Correct.
Where would you anticipate the AMA's going to come down on this?
American Medical Association? They, well, that's a good question. I think the AMA has certainly recognized that the opioid epidemic is a major problem, and so there has been a tremendous amount of recognition that opioids have been overprescribed, they have been prescribed well beyond the indications that the drugs have been approved for. And I think the AMA recognizes that. They have joined in, I think, some pronouncements concerning trying to educate the medical community about the proper use or prescriptions. I mean, that's what I, but I'm not aware of anything more than that, other than just a recognition of the problem. So I guess I don't know, you know, what the AMA may do.
Well, my question was really pointed, do you feel like that they'll be friendly to this action? Federal procedure is sort of strange to me compared to state procedure. And certainly, the AMA would have a big impact to the court. So do you think they would be on one side or the other, or try to stay neutral?
It's a really interesting question. The AMA, I would expect that the AMA, first of all, I'm aware of no statements by the AMA yet about counties and cities suing the drug manufacturers or distributors. If they have said anything publicly, I'm not aware of it. I believe the AMA would, I would expect them to be interested in their constituents, their members, which is, which are medical professionals, hospitals, members of their association, and I would expect them to defend them. Now, I do want to make clear, our focus in this litigation, and because we believe this is where this epidemic began, our focus is on the manufacturers and the distributors of these pills. They are the companies that have profited from it, and they kind of planted the seeds and nourished the seeds to grow this epidemic. We're not suing unless, in rare instances, we find in a community a, you know, a truly fraudulent pill mill type doctor, and many of those doctors have started to be identified. Law enforcement has taken steps in some cases. But if we find doctors in certain communities who kind of fit that bill, we might take, we might include a doctor like that in this case, but our focus is not on physicians, and it's not on hospitals. We are, in fact, we are also representing some hospitals that are publicly funded and have had to give away a lot of care for opioid-addicted babies, who they have to provide a lot of services for, but don't often get reimbursement or anywhere close to full reimbursement for that. So we are, we are sort of, I guess you would say, we're really focused on the manufacturers and distributors. I don't think the AMA would have a problem with that. That's just my prediction, but I can speak for it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
You talked about, you know, of course, the law enforcement correction side of it, of course, social services and foster care and all that. You know, we're seeing an increase here in school funding for special education, and talking with other localities in southwest Virginia, it seems to be a trend. And I don't think it's too far of a stretch of imagination to think that maybe we're starting to see some of those opioid-addicted children enter the school system. Is that an angle that you guys have looked at, you know, as far as adding, I guess, teeth to your case?
That's an interesting angle, and absolutely one that we would look at. I think, you know, there are, the, kind of the fallout or the consequences of this epidemic, it's been in existence long enough now, that I think there's all kinds of kind of fallout and consequences.
I mean, the easy part is the, you know, what you discussed, the added stress on law enforcement, budget-wise, and corrections of the court system, but I really think this is an angle that's starting to hit home, is these children that were born, you know, in the early days of the epidemic, that are aging out and entering the school system.
I'm going to make a note of that, you know, that you've mentioned that, because that's interesting to me and one that we would absolutely look at. And I think, I think there are, like you say, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways where there may be some connection. Now, under the law, we do have to have enough of a connection. Sometimes things get sufficiently blurry over time that we can't draw enough of a connection, but we would absolutely look at it, so.
Mr. Barr?
Follow along the lines of what he said and along what you said, and just, I guess, general information. You said damages, but how do we get to classify what are county damages? Social services, you're paying 20% of the budget, state and federal is paying the other part of it. School systems, you're paying 20% of the budget, state and federal for providing other parts of it. Law enforcement, you know, similar things. How do you get into classifying what are county damages on those items?
One thing that we do is we use an expert for that purpose. In other words, we hire an expert economist who has experience in, you know, analyzing the consequences on public services of big impact. So we hire an expert to help us with it. They create a model that counties kind of use to help show it. There are some damages that are very, very direct and easy. More Narcan purchases by law enforcement, more, you know, absolute direct linkable services in substance abuse counseling. There's a number of things that are very, very direct. The costs that are not just as simple as, you know, an item on the budget that clearly is 100% related to opioid addiction, those are the ones where you do have to dig into a little bit more. And what ultimately you do is you create, you show the connection by identifying the time period where the opioid epidemic has, opioid epidemic has been at its peak, and you can kind of compare the world of the expenses that relate to it. You see what they've been in the time of the opioid epidemic, and you compare them to the time that there was not that epidemic. And you account for the other factors. I mean, that's why these are kind of complicated regression analyses that economists use, but it's a, so it's a, it's a comprehensive look at attempting statistically, analytically, it has to pass, you know, muster with the federal courts. They scrutinize, is this using a reliable methodology or not? But you use a model that kind of shows, this is what has happened, you know, because of the epidemic, and you have to show the link. I'm not sure how else to explain it, but it's just an expert model, so.
I know our regional jail cost is in the millions, as far as, you know, dealing with the drug problems in southwest Virginia, especially here in Worth County. It's been in the millions over the years. So you want to ask, have any questions?
You've talked to several other counties. Do you have any other counties in southwest Virginia on board?
We just started, really, this process. We've, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Chafin, our team has kind of been speaking here with a number of counties just for the last few days, and so, you know, I don't know, unless Mr. Campbell knows something that I don't. I think we, I think we have a number of them that have indicated a very, very favorable response. And so, we're hopeful and expecting that we will. But I'm not, I'm not sure I'm in a position to say county X has actually signed on the dotted line, but that's just because we've just started talking to them. So, I mean, we're, we would certainly, to the extent any of our clients would allow us to disclose the fact that they've retained us, we would be more than happy to do that as soon as, as soon as we can, so.
Don, to Campbell?
Yeah, we do. And we anticipate having, you know, several in the next few days. You know, I think it's important too for me to try to lay out the factual history of what these companies were doing and the reasons we believe it gives rise to liability and why you ought to get involved in this. If you go back and you look at the history of the development of these drugs, when they sought FDA approval, FDA gave approval only for short-term pain situations. Wasn't intended to be given chronically to individuals in any way, shape, or form. So, the companies then decided they were going to do what's known as marketing the drugs off-label. And so, what they did was, they went out and they hired doctors and they paid them millions of dollars to go out and conduct these symposiums nationwide and train other physicians about the fact that they could be utilized to address long-term pain. Never mind the fact that it's not been approved by the FDA, never mind the fact that the companies did not undertake a double-blind placebo study, they simply did this with marketing and convincing these doctors that they were safe to prescribe. So, the reasons why we don't think that we should be necessarily going after the local doc down on Main Street is because they, in a way, are a victim. You know, they've been, they've had this hoax perpetrated on them by this company or these companies. These drugs were known, Oxycontin was a blockbuster drug. Within the sixth year of sales, it had reached $1.6 billion a year. So, the company saw the profit and they went after the profit and they did it in this negligent fashion. And the impact has been profound, there's no question. And it's going to be years and decades down the road before we actually, even if we could stop it completely today, the residual impact is going to be decades. And you're exactly right, it's going to hit the education system, there's no question. And, you know, the bad, the sad part is, is that we're having to take our precious tax dollars that we otherwise would be plowing into building new schools or, you know, building roads or providing public safety. And ultimately, we're having to take that and redirect it into addressing these problems. And to me, that's the very essence of this case and why these companies should be held accountable and responsible. And the reasons we're urging the counties to get involved now, you know, the tobacco litigation, you remember that certainly. And ultimately, the problem there is, how much impact has that had on each of the localities? Well, not much because ultimately, our local elected bodies didn't have the ability to be able to have a big say in how that money was utilized. And what we're trying to prevent is that situation happening again and the county's not having a seat at the table. You know, we're trying to give you that voice and that's exactly the reason we're here. The reason we chose Wagstaff and Cartmail is because they have mass tort litigation experience, a lot of it. And you're going to need that when you're talking about litigating against giants like Johnson &amp; Johnson. You, I know that there's other firms that have been around Virginia and in other areas trying to promote themselves. Kaufman &amp; Canel's is one out of Norfolk. They don't do mass tort litigation. What's going to happen, there are going to be a lot of firms that are going to come to you or other counties and they're going to ask you to sign up with them. And they're going to park your case in that MDL and they're going to sit there and wait until they get a resolution, if they get a resolution. This firm is on the forefront of the litigation team. So, it's calculated to deliver you quick authoritative results. And that's the reason that we brought them here and we hope that you will see the propriety in signing on. And most, and we think we're going to get most of counties.
Does anybody have any questions for Donald and Campbell?
Excuse me, I have a question. I'd like to know what's required of our county besides opening the books perhaps? Do we provide increased values and so on in services? Who's to determine the cost increase in services? Is this going to require another attorney on our staff or committee or more employees?
No, ma'am. We obviously, if it's okay, I know that it's sort of out of...
It's out of order.
Well, but I'll address it. I think it's a fair question, honestly. We're contemplating, obviously, there's going to have to be some feedback from, you know, the employees here to try to build the model and determine what the damages are here. We don't think that's going to be incredibly involved, obviously, because we're doing this with a number of different jurisdictions. So, you know, the model is going to be a sort of uniform, we think. Obviously, we're going to need to get some feedback in terms of statistics and things. Nothing that is going to be overwhelming, nothing that's going to require the need of any additional staff or anything like that that we can see. Did that answer your question, Lyndon?
It's a start.
Okay.
But I know and the Department of Social Services has a lot of these statistics anyway that you'll be needing. Well, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Does anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Campbell or anybody else that's with him?
Nobody asking about the budget, really?
We're off. We're going...
We don't want to stress you.
Well, I'm already stressed, then.
I mean, okay, I'll ask you, now you go back to 11. Tomorrow?
Tomorrow. We're going back tonight, actually.
Tonight.
We're loaded up and ready to go.
Or yet, I mean, what is the consensus of the House and the Senate?
I told Galax last night, I think that we probably get a budget within 30 to 45 days, somewhere in that timeframe. Now, that again, I'm being probably optimistic, but from some of the rumors I'm hearing, you know, I think something happens here. The good thing about state government here, we're constitutionally bound to have a budget by June 30th. So, you know, it's not like Washington where we can just pass continuing resolutions and wait 11 years and never pass a budget. We're going to have to do that. Otherwise, the government really does shut down here. So, we'll get there. We always have and we will again. We're going to do it as expeditiously as possible because we recognize that has a major impact on your planning. You know, you have to, you know, have a general idea of what you're going to get in order to be able to set your own budgets. We understand that. But we're getting there.
I know the House budget is a little more generous than the Senate budget as far as K through 12. What do y'all, you been in negotiations with other, with the Senate and the House on which way you're going to go?
The conferees have. You know, at this point, when we leave there and the budget conferees take the ball and they run with it, and that's one of the reasons we're going back is we see where they've gotten and we get that information when we get there. I'll be happy to let you know, obviously, as quickly as I do.
I appreciate all your information. I know I worried you today.
No, it's not. You all have my cell number, so if you need to call me or you need something, certainly reach out to me at any time. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to have been here tonight and hope you'll entertain undertaking this because I think it's certainly calculated to deliver the county some really needed revenues.
Mr. Hale.
Jeff, I want to take an opportunity, not just for us, but the citizens of With County. Thank you for y'all taking this initiative and really giving us some tools to fight back. Without some kind of an organization, obviously, we can't fight the drug companies.
No, not individually.
I wholeheartedly endorse your approach.
It's not, Joe, it's not the only answer. It's one answer, obviously, part of a much larger equation. You know, obviously legislatively, we've tried to undertake some of it as well, but it's not going to be the saving grace. But it's, what it will do is it will provide some resources to the county to be able to address some of the issues that you're going to have to address with.
Your associates there, real conundrum to me is how do you put a number on what it's done to the workforce now and in the future? That's really the big number. We can see the other numbers because there's ambushes, but I happen to believe we've destroyed a generation, a good part of it.
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment, it really is.
Senator, you wish to say anything?
Well, I just want to thank you for hearing us and, you know, both Jeff and I represent, we represent clients, but we represent people and communities and real communities. My district is just beside Senator Carrico's. You know, the interstate kind of divides it as it comes up the road and I don't have any of With County, but I'm all around you, okay? And I go up into Pulaski and Radford and Partis Smith. And so, just like you mentioned, Mr. Hale, you know, we've longed for an answer. I mean, as a people and as a legislative body, we've longed for an answer because we're asked questions constantly. I mean, we're constantly talking to people and they are reminding us that this is like a disease eating us alive as a people. And so, we, as we saw other and realized that other communities were being proactive, other counties, other cities, they were becoming proactive and they were reaching out and hiring law firms that had national experience in handling these kinds of cases. We decided to form the consortium and get together and find a lawsuit that, excuse me, a law firm that had a lot of experience, we feel like will be having a seat at the table of leadership in this thing, not just off to the side, you know, with clients, but actually leading the charge. And we wanted to introduce them and we wanted to get involved as, we're both lawyers too and Kim Haw is a lawyer too. And we wanted to get involved, but we also wanted to bring this to the communities that we served in Southwest Virginia. And that's, that's the thought of actually doing something that would have a way of stemming this and turning some of it, turning the aggressive nature of the way that this has attacked our society is very appealing to me. I mean, we know that communities right here, per 100 persons, there are communities that are getting 200 prescriptions per 100 persons, you know, 400 prescriptions per 100 persons. Now, those drugs are getting diverted out into your communities. I mean, they're getting them, they're living off of them, they're diverting them, you know, they're going out into the communities and people are buying, swapping, trading, selling, and distributing. And that has really, really, really took a toll because it's changed the way people think and they think it's okay. A lot of people think this is okay. Good people think this is okay. And that's why we got to turn around because that's our, that's our future, that's our workforce.
I think confession is a good place to start. Y'all all admit you're lawyers and that's a good...
That's not always easy depending on the crowd.
But I do agree and I'll plug, cut in a plug for the drug courts. I think we need them in every county.
Absolutely. But that's a cost.
I know, it's a cost.
As a result of this.
It's a cost.
Well, I don't think you can, you know, this is not something you can legislate your way out of. We found out we can't arrest our way out of it. It's difficult to treat our way out of it. And, you know, maybe if we hurt the pocketbooks of these pharmaceutical companies, because ultimately, they've got the power to put a stop to this.
They did. They've made the billions of dollars.
They caused the problem. I mean, I run a narcotics dog for 20 years and out in Southwest Virginia, out in the coalfields around here, I'm numerous going into residents doing search warrant and finding bottles, I mean, of empty, where they took the, took them apart and took the insides out of them, I mean, thousands of them. And I mean, it's been a problem for a long time.
And I will disclose my sister-in-law, who's a pharmaceutical rep. I hope she doesn't watch this video because she actually conducts drug studies, so.
Well, we're not condemning pharmaceutical reps or any, but it was negligent the way the companies went out and hired tens of thousands of pharmaceutical reps, gave them a faulty message and had them deliver that to physicians that they were lied to. That was the problem. We've seen, we've seen statistics where America leads the world, not just by a little bit on the amount of opioid drugs that are being put out there in society, but America is only a small portion of the world's population, but it's 85% of what's being dispensed in narcotics. 85%. Now, the Europeans and the Eastern, both Western Europe and Eastern Europe, they don't do this, okay? They follow the rules that people followed for 100 years here in this country and that is, they knew narcotics were dangerous and they knew they were only to be allowed to people for short periods of time for acute pain because people get addicted to them. They get addicted. And the companies knew that the addiction issue was there and they ignored it, ignored it in favor of the profit. And that's the issue.
Well, Senator Chaffin, Donald and Campbell, I appreciate y'all bringing this to us, you know, and we appreciate it. And I'm going to ask the, I know we're going recess until Thursday morning and I'd like to get some, have a consultation with our county attorney on this and if it would be agreeable to everybody to come in at 9:00 on Thursday morning before we go to the school board and kind of get a, had to give us time to read what Mr. Farthing has sent us and have any questions prepared for him on Thursday morning at 9:00 and we can discuss it then. Okay, with that being said, Mr. Barr, does anything else before bringing forward the board at this time?
Yeah, do what I want to do, thank you. We're going to go to the rich and senior.
Thank y'all, have a safe trip.
Can y'all carpool together and see if you can't figure it out?
We'll get it figured out.
Thank y'all.
Donald and Campbell and I can agree on most of it.
Thank y'all, good seeing you.
Thank you.
One more item and part of our discussion, I have the school board on Tuesday. I sent this out to you all, Grammys lady, by email, the length of it, I believe, and I also sent you some numbers. But this is the school resource officer's grant that if we are applying for, it has to be in by May 11, 2018. So, we've got a month basically to work on getting this together. We'll be working with our grant writer and I may also work with our previous grant writers jointly on working on this.
And this is, can apply both for SROs and SSOs?
You can, there is, you can apply for school resource officer, which is a full-time position and you can, or, and/or you can apply for school security officer as full-time positions or part-time positions on the school security officers. I sent an email out just with some numbers just for discussion purposes. They can be changed, they can be amended, they can look at, but understanding what the grant amount would be that we would receive in the process. Basically, it's written, it is prepared off of the school composite fund index. So, and I'll round it up. Basically, 68% is what the state would pay for, DCJS would pay for, 32% is what we would pay for. The good news is, it is a level funding grant over four years, so it is not a declining grant. What comes in the first year is the same amount that you should be getting the fourth. And the numbers that I provided were just for various reasons. Three is what we currently have at the school. Eight is the full-time positions that the sheriff talked with me about and part of this discussion was, he is hoping that the town is looking at covering the three schools... discussion was he is, uh, hoping that the town is looking at covering the three schools in town, um, as a possibility and I haven't found out if they're definitely applying for this grant or not, and he was looking at eight officers for the rest of the county, for the schools, and also that gave him one to sort of swing back and forth.
You check with, uh, Wayne tomorrow and just see which one...
I can check with Wayne and just sort of see what, where they stand on this. Um, obviously, the School Security Officer option means you are giving the money to the school board. The school board has to operate that program and, and do the hiring on that program. Uh, I have spoken with Bay Court just to try to find out if they can provide any type of an estimate of a liability, insurance if they're here in this little locality, because obviously if DCJS is, is opening this to not just School Resource Officers, but School Security Officers, there are probably other localities that are discussing this, looking at this, and I'll see if they had any numbers. They have not contacted me back yet, but I am, am looking at that, so, um, the, you know, there, the sheriff's initial discussion, Chief W is here, the, uh, the eight, um, officers, he is requesting that they be 100% county funded. I think there was room for negotiation there of what VAF funded or county funded in, in that discussion. So, the numbers, uh, and I, I gave you the backups in the spreadsheets, uh, you know, so they can, we can add to them, we can double them, whatever. One option I did not put in here, but it is very similar to the, the School Security Officer option, um, is the part-time position that our sheriff, Sheriff Deputy. Uh, that is not eligible for the grant right now. The grant is full-time deputies only or part-time, full-time School Security Officers. So, if you were funding, you know, three schools for part-time, you could look at the School Security Officer option part-time, just realize you're not getting those matching grant funds to go with. So, the uniform cost will probably increase, uniform costs may need to increase anyway. So, those items are out there, uh, but we do need to be making a decision coming up on how we want to proceed with this, if we want to look at School Resource Officers or School Security Officers, combination of both, um, you know, School Resource Officers for the high school middle school, School Security Officers for the elementary schools, just ideas thrown out there for discussion, but we will need to get all that together so we can get our grant application.
Do you think it'd be beneficial for the school board to have this prior to our meeting on Thursday?
I believe they have that, but I will make certain that they do.
I want to make a comment, please, and I guess I'll read my disclosure first. Um, this is my conflict disclosure for the sheriff's office. I, Ryan Lawson, as a member of the With County Board of Supervisors, declare pursuant to the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act regarding the With County Sheriff's Office matters on the agenda or the SROs that are being discussed this evening. I have a personal interest because my husband is a full-time employee of the With County Sheriff's Office, which will be affected by, by the matters of the SRO discussion in our meeting this evening, and I declare that I'm able to participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. And I just wanted to say, I know we need to talk about it soon, but we really need to have a backup plan if, if this grant doesn't go through as soon as possible.
So, I don't know if you, you originally signed this to Personnel Committee and had some school people with it after the meeting on Tuesday, or if we want to go ahead and schedule another Personnel Committee to review this, if you want to have the full board discuss this or...
I think after Thursday morning, you know, after we meet with the school board, we'll probably just, we go out to, we've got a bunch of budget stuff to work on anyway.
I think we'll have to come back next week anyway, so maybe next Tuesday or...
The full board to discuss it.
I'd like to bring up...
Mr. Hale?
Could you ask the county attorney to less simplify what we're into now for the first time? Can, can all of us that are involved, I guess everybody is now, any disclosure be made one time and made part of the record so they don't have to go through this every time? Can you make one declaration?
They can do a declaration and have it, have a written declaration, but each time, the code requires that each time a discussion is had where a conflict exists, they have to announce that disclosure. So, potentially every meeting, if there's a sheriff signing budget on the agenda, that disclosure needs to be read for that day by Ms. Lawson.
The conference we went to a week ago, two weeks ago, whenever we went to that, that was one, and the county attorney up there said, "I keep these things on the table, I hand them out at every meeting for them to read," and he said it's PEG, whatever it was, so this, I took that to say it is annoying to have to do, but to meet the code, that's, that's what you have to do. I will defer entirely to the county attorney on that, but they talked about just having them readily available and...
I, to follow up on what Mr. Hale said, I'd suggest that you contact the executive director of the Conflict Council because in doing my research, they've gave a completely different opinion on a similar situation in Campbell County than they gave Mr. Farthing about my conflict, and I've sent this all to the executive director and he's researching it to explain why they're giving different opinions. So, don't use the help email, email the executive director.
Okay, anything else to come forward to board?
Yes.
Mr. McRoberts?
We have a meeting Thursday. We have a meeting this Thursday. I have a document, the only thing I can teach, but I'll come when I get out.
Okay.
School board starts at nine, they don't know exactly when they'll be done for us to join them, so they said it'll probably be nine thirty. Do you want to start here at nine on some of this issues and then go later?
I mean, you can even, if they want to call us when they get done with their business and then we can come over.
I don't know if I'll be here or not. If I get my conflict opinion from the Commonwealth Attorney, then I'll try to make arrangements to be here.
I may be at the school board office, but it probably won't be with y'all, because I have those little kids up there taking care of them.
Can we do this one evening, possibly?
The school board conference, we can't stay with them.
Yeah, school board is at their meeting.
What time do you go to work?
Hey, I mean, I'm flexible, but it sounds to me like there's a good chance I can't be there. I'll try everything I can, but that's, that leaves maybe only three.
I would say the meeting next week, we could do it in the afternoon, nine o'clock, whatever, six o'clock meeting, whatever it says for you all next, one day.
Next week, yeah.
What's that, Thursday?
Thursday, it's, it'll have to be in the morning at school board. Anything else? Anybody got anything else to bring forward to board? Here and then, we'll be in recess until nine AM on Thursday morning, the 12th.